One moment, your worship.
Thank you, we're gonna start the meeting, my apologies for the delay. So I'd like to call this committee the whole meeting for October fourteenth, twenty twenty one, to order with adoption of the agenda. Someone wanna make that motion for me? Counselor Shalat, second by Counselor Brooks Hill, all in favor? Motion carried, adoption of the minutes from September sixteenth, twenty twenty one. Someone wanna make that motion? Counselor Elliott, Counselor Burke Hill, all in favor? Motion's carried. Any business arising from those minutes? Saying done, we're gonna move on to, well, actually, let's talk about, is there a presentation for the Finance Department regarding that? Counsel remuneration at this point in this McCabe, or are we okay just leaving it in the minutes?
Through your worship, I have started the research and I've got some information from other communities and will be working on a report to bring back to counsel to set up the committee for this.
Alright, thank you for that. Alright, let's move on to delegations and presentations. Six A Development Finance Workshop, Part Two. Nancy Henderson, Urban Systems. Nancy?
Thank you for having me back, Mayor and members of council. I will just stick up my presentation. I believe Ms. Russo is going to give me hosting capabilities, so I will share my screen. Alrighty, alright, well, thanks again, as noted, for having me back. We have another busy agenda today on, for our Development Finance Workshop, Part Two. What I'd like to do is recap what we discussed quite quickly, the DCC workshop back in August. Just kind of recap what we heard, make sure we got it right, see if council has any additional thoughts, and go over the Part Two objectives. And then I will go through several development finance tools, some which are used by the City of Rebelstoke at the moment, some which aren't, and with particular focus on density bonusing and community amenity contributions, as I know that council has expressed interest in learning more about those. We have, and then we'll get into some next steps and questions and discussion. So last time, we discussed, in general, like what council's approach to growth was, which I think is a really important consideration as you're considering development finance tools. I think there was, you know, some differing opinion, as there always is around the table, but I think what I heard was that, you know, Rebelstoke is generally open for business. There's a willingness to incent certain types of development, likely more than others, but there's a general feeling that growth should pay its own way. And my understanding was the exception would be probably more around affordable housing, because that's a significant issue in the community, and maybe even some infill or redevelopment of potential, like downtown or industrial areas that council may wish to encourage, more than, let's say, greenfield, single-family residential. Do you think that's a fair summary?
Yes.
Alright, and you know, in terms of what types and locations are preferred, we didn't really get into a deep discussion there, but I really think that your OCP process that's underway, I will really clarify that. So things to think about as we go is if there's certain types of development you wanna incent, you know, strategies to do that. And then, in terms of the growth, and a good understanding of infrastructure requirements and the costs to accommodate growth, what I heard is essentially the city has master plan, plans underway for most of your infrastructure and, you know, in addition to the OCP. And once those are complete, there'll be a much better understanding of those costs and a willingness to move forward with a comprehensive DCC review, once those are complete. And in terms of the community's risk tolerance, tolerance to front-end infrastructure costs to accommodate growth, you know, the community being rather small doesn't necessarily have deep pockets to finance private sector development infrastructure, but maybe there'd be some situations that that, that that would be considered. And the questions that we considered as we went through the DCC deep dive, I recommend that you consider as we go through this workshop as well, and in particular, when you're also completing your master planning projects, because it makes it a lot easier to complete your comprehensive DCC review when you're going through those projects thinking, hmm, you know, how does this improvement in infrastructure, who does it benefit? You know, how is it benefiting growth and how's it benefiting existing populations? Because that will really make your DCC review much easier, because you can attribute all these costs more than likely to growth and some of those will have to be paid for by the taxpayer. So understanding those portions are really important. And this workshop is, you know, very similar to the last one, but the last one was really just focused on DCCs. We'll be looking at the other tools and also community amenities, which are slightly different in that what they're paying for is not financed through your typical development cost charge program. And we'll, we'll get more into that as we, as we move through the process. So the workshops are really like, how can we afford and finance growth? How, you know, there's different situations that you're gonna use different tools and it's really important to consider, there's not one tool in all situations. It's flexibility and considering, like, understanding all of them that are available to you are really important. It's really important to differentiate, you know, securing works and services that are required as a condition of approval versus financing growth-related infrastructure, sort of beyond the frontage of the development. And we will discuss some of the tools that the city currently uses in context with, with the tools as we go over them. And as noted, I'll spend more time with density bonusing and community amenity contributions as a, like, a specific way to fund community amenities specifically. And I've got that towards the end of the presentation. So this is a slide from the last workshop, and just a reminder, you know, growth doesn't always pay for itself. There's ongoing operation and maintenance costs that the, that the tax base essentially has to pay for over time. Different types of growth have different costs associated with them. You know, you'll often hear about sprawling growth versus smart and compact growth. And, you know, maintaining and having a good asset management program will definitely help balance those costs as you go. And I think the whole fairness and equity approach was something that's very important whenever you're considering development finance. You know, some people might feel, oh, we'll get growth to pay for it, we'll get the development to pay for it, but it's really important that growth pays your costs associated with growth and not be burdened with existing deficiencies. And that's where, when you, that's where the transparency in developing the programs are really important. So there's different types of finance tools, cost recovery being one of them, which is, we, a big portion of the development cost charge program would be cost recovery for those costs of specific infrastructure. The local area service area would be another one, and that also could be used for existing deficiencies and user fees and charges are examples of cost recovery. Sources of capital, other than your general revenues from tax, taxation, there's, you know, short and long-term borrowing, and of course, things like grants are other examples of capital. Developer build agreements, there's a number of different ways to go about these, but this is where you're transferring the responsibility for financing to the developer. So Rebelstoke right now has your WSA agreements, but DCC credits, rebates, phase development agreements, and development works agreements are other examples of those tools. And in some cases, partnership agreements can work quite well. Definitely, I mean, some areas, I think particularly in the United States, you might see that with infrastructure, but quite often, community amenities might be developed through partnership agreements with other public and sometimes private bodies. So this, again, is the tools that we'll be looking at, specifically the local area service charges, user fees and charges, works and service agreements, and the community amenity contributions, development agreements, and density bonusing as we.
Nancy, sorry to interrupt, but I just have a quick clarification. So the tools that you showed on the last slide, those are ones that were currently available to us and then on the next slide is all of them, is that right?
Well, these are the different types of tools, like cost recovery versus borrowing versus sources of capital or partnership agreements. So there are types, and then the next slide, this one is examples of the different tools, but these ones will fit into different categories of the slide that I previously.
Okay, gotcha, thanks.
Alright, so it's good to, when we're looking at the other tools, because I will, we'll consider like the DCC deep dive is kind of our marquee development finance tool, but, you know, it's important to kind of, when you're looking at the other tools, is that you're using them for projects that DCCs can't fund or don't qualify for. So quite often, you know, if it's required immediately and it's not in your DCC program, as you know, since you've got like a two thousand five, two thousand and eight DCC program, if it's not in there, you can't, you know, it's not funded. So that's when you need to look to these other tools. And knowing that a comprehensive review, you know, often takes, you know, eighteen months, you know, as to two years, sometimes even longer in some situations, to implement. So if someone's wanting to move forward with the development, you're gonna probably wanna look at these other options. And then you also don't wanna, you can't use DCCs to rectify existing deficiencies, you know, especially that aren't related to growth, that are related to the existing population. And sometimes when it benefits only a really small area, DCCs are generally not the best tool, so you might wanna look to these other options. Other examples, just in terms of items that aren't included in the DCC program, I just keep reiterating that because many municipalities don't understand that when the, when the item isn't in the program, it's just not fundable, so you have to look to other options. And then, you know, parks and recreational buildings such as arenas, city halls, libraries, and then the parks improvement, DCCs are quite limited as well. So artificial turf and, you know, hard surface tennis courts, those types of things can't be funded through the parks DCC at this time. There is a push to expand what they can be used to fund, but at this time, those types of items are not covered. And then ongoing operation and maintenance, of course. And so, you know, in terms of, you know, this whole, what tool I use, it really depends, recognizing, you know, to have a broad approach, to keep all the tools in your tool belt and not having a prescriptive strategy, because sometimes different tools are just better for different situations. So being pragmatic and flexible is a good thing. Identifying key factors that influence the approach to specific cases, like the types of development, ownership structure. So if you have a development with multiple developers, it's more complicated versus, you know, a single developer comprehensive development area. Your tools tend to change, and we'll get into that a little bit. And also, when you need these requirements, are they all immediately or could they be phased over time? And then, yeah, I mean, sometimes, like we kind of talked about right at the beginning is, are there situations, types of development that you really wanna encourage? Like affordable housing, and you might wanna use different tools or some of the other tools, even as you talked about, like DCC reduction, bylaws as a consideration to incent certain types of development. And the city's tolerance to risk is another one where if you, some municipalities with really deep pockets might be okay to finance the infrastructure to an area that they really wanna see happen, but smaller municipalities might not have the ability to do so. I also think it's really important to look at the development industry's structure and how sophisticated it is. It's something to keep in mind, you know, when you have, what's often termed as mom-and-pop development, but are smaller development companies that, you know, are maybe doing one development here and there. Generally, their profit margin is a lot lower because it's just more expensive for them to develop than a larger developer. So something to really consider when you're considering things like community amenity contributions, and we can talk a little bit more about that when we get there. So just to sum up, and we talked about this last time as well, but some of the development finance tools used in Rebelstoke, we've talked a lot about DCCs. You do have local area service bylaws in Big Eddie and Thomas Brook, developer build agreements or your WSAs, quite a few of those. I think there's some latecomer agreements, but they're generally rare and you guys don't have a latecomer agreement policy, which would be recommended if you're gonna utilize, have those utilized more often. And your development community might push for that as well. And dedicated connection fees is something that you do have and that kind of comes under the user fee and charges classification. So just going into the tools, I'm just gonna kind of go by them one by one. I've got, you know, a pretty simple presentation for most of them, with, as I noted, a little more meat to the presentation when it comes to CACs and density bonusing. But before I go into the tools, are there any questions that I can answer right now?
Any questions, council, it's Counselor.
Yeah, is the, is the push to expand those eligible projects that can be included in a DCC program, where is that coming from? Is that like province? Like, where is that push?
Yeah, there was a UBCM resolution several years ago and there's been, probably, I would imagine, one every year to, similar to that, you know, looking at the municipal side, because, you know, the province in general, I mean, they've definitely kind of warmed to community amenity contributions over the years. They certainly prefer density bonusing, but there's all kinds of costs that just aren't covered by the tools that we have. So if they want us to use the tools that we have, then they need to expand the breadth of them so that municipalities, you know, keep wondering how they're gonna pay for everything that, that's their responsibility.
Why do they prefer density bonusing?
Because it is, like, clear, it's in the local government, actually have the authority to do that versus community amenity contributions. And we can talk about that a little bit more when we, when we dive in. You know, sometimes, you know, the authorization to ask for them can be questioned, so that's why there's, it's really important to have proper policies in place and practices in place to collect them, to ensure that you're staying on good legal footing.
Gotcha. And the latecomer agreements, can you just refresh my memory on what those are?
Yeah, I'm gonna hit a slide on that, so.
Okay. Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions, council? Saying done, carry on Nancy, please.
Alright, thank you. Okay, so the local area service, a tool that's familiar to Rebelstoke and that you do have these tools, but they're essentially used to fund, you know, specific parks and infrastructure capital works within a specific area of the community. Some communities use them for downtown beautification programs as well. You'll often see them used to extend, you know, sewer water to a particular neighborhood and everyone's kind of chipping in their fair share. Yeah, they're generally like super local in nature and not like a big growth trunk main type project. It's front-ended by the municipality and then recovered from the property owners within the boundary of that local service area using taxes. You can, you can structure the tax different ways and using like property value tax or parcel tax or combination of the two. And it really depends on, you know, what the local area service for is for and, and your, your CFO would be probably the best there to kind of speak as to what's the most appropriate in different situations. And so, except for waste management plans or the implementation of that, the municipal council may only adopt a local area service bylaw if the service and its cost recovery methods have been approved by the taxpayer or electors within the service area. So everybody that's paying into it, well, you have to have like a fifty percent approval rate. And there's some different provisions in terms of, you can also have like a counter petition as well as an option, but, you know, they do need support from the property owners in order to move forward. So that's a key one to consider with the local area service. Generally, as mentioned, not really for growth-related infrastructure.
Counselor Shalat has a question.
Just a quick question on that slide. We talked about taxpayers or electors. Is there a particular instance where you would ask one versus the other? And how would that be?
Yeah, I think elector ascent is generally what we'd be considering. I think it's kind of, you could use that interchangeably, like taxpayers or electors within the service area. So essentially, people that, you know, are voting, right?
Yeah, I'm just saying, because that, that changes the game a little bit when it comes to tenants versus landowners. Because in certain areas, and so if you were gonna do improvement that might benefit the residents quite a bit, but not necessarily the landowners, I find that, like, that might be an interesting difference.
Mr. Parker?
So, to, to the comment, it is, it does require an elector ascent, so if you draw a circle around an area, everybody who's eligible to vote, that's, that's what that means.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Yeah, so a tenant wouldn't have the opportunity to vote, in that case.
Yeah, they would, if they're a resident, they'd be, they'd be elected.
If they're a citizen in that area. If you're a registered elector for the municipality, establish a service area you're entitled to be part of that.
Yeah, because we'd be, they'd be paying the taxes through their rent, in theory.
Yeah.
Because their landlord would be passing on that cost, so then they just, it just means they have a state.
That's legislation.
I just find it interesting, because it is, it's like, it's not the same people necessarily.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's something that I'll, I'll send Ms. Wade an email to verify, because I think that's a very good question, but the, the burden runs with the property owner and not the tenant. So if the tenant was to say, hey, I'm, I'm giving my notice, I don't know that they should be necessarily allowed to vote on that parcel tax being applied to their, their landowner. So I'll, I'll get a verification on that for you by email.
Right, so it might, it might depend on which kind of tax or what.
Yeah, nice.
It'll depend on the type of project as well.
Yeah.
Some projects will require a percentage of the community, and that's electoral, I would say.
Right.
And other ones will be, yeah, other ones will be a parcel tax and that's landowner.
Right. Okay, interesting.
Alright, carry on, thanks Nancy.
Okay, thank you. Alright, and user fees and charges, so most municipalities in the past have used, considered user fees and charges to cover operating costs, not so much capital costs, but that attitude is changing and many municipalities are using user fees and charges to repay capital costs. So again, they can be collected and used to cover the cost of financing, financing growth, and I think you'll see this sometimes used in water treatment plants, not just the water fees. So they do vary by category or property, the type of business, but they must be established as well by a bylaw and clearly related to the cost of providing service. So as noted, there's mixed views on the appropriateness of the tool, the finance growth-related capital, but we're starting to see more of that. And there's no elector ascent process required for this. So that would be one reason that I think municipalities are starting to kind of dip their toe in user fees and charges to pay for capital. So latecomer agreements, so essentially, when a municipality requires a developer to install excess or extended services, meaning services that required above what's required to service their development. So if you need a bigger water main to service an area and they're digging up the road anyway, basically municipalities might ask them to put in a larger water main, but that difference in costs can be attributed to, to the properties that benefit from that cost. It can't be used for anything that's funded under the DCC program. So if that water main increases in the DCC program, you can't latecomer it, but there'd be other, like, DCC credits potentially for that. The maximum time limit for a latecomer is fifteen years and then it expires. So that's something where a lot of, depending where the development is, you know, if, if there's, could be a lot of risk to the developer if people aren't necessarily moving forward with development at a quick pace. And even in fairly rapidly growing communities, it does amaze me how quickly fifteen years goes by. So that's sort of one of the drawbacks to the development community. And if the cost of the, like, if the value to the developer or the latecomer isn't that high, quite often, they just can't be bothered with going through the process and they'll just kind of put the, put the extra pipe in, because there is some administrative burden here. And it's really recommended, and the City of Rebelstoke doesn't have a latecomer policy that, that I could find, but to develop a latecomer policy that really lays out all the steps as to, you know, how you go about determining what the latecomer fees are and also for the municipality and how they go about collecting the fees. So that's something that I would recommend, putting on the list of things to do for the city if you are gonna be utilizing latecomers. And the developer is legally entitled to a latecomer, so it's good to have that policy in place. Okay, development works agreement and development works service agreements, they're two totally separate things, but I've put them together because there's more similarity than differences. The WSA agreements, that, which is like a works and service agreement is in your subdivision servicing bylaw and it's something that's often utilized by the City of Rebelstoke to secure infrastructure improvements by the developer. It's slightly different than a development work agreement, and I'll, I'll get into that in a sec. So basically, like, the, the development works agreements are for the provision of infrastructure. You can also use them for parks improvements. They're both types of agreements allow the municipality to require the developer to provide significant services in exchange for receiving their development approval. So often, like, your WSA agreements are likely secured as a, as a condition of adoption and zoning or some other development approval process. Development works agreement, where the developer essentially provide the works and the municipality allocates all or part of the cost of the works to the property owners in the area, which is subject to the agreement. So kind of like a local area service for growth. So an example might be, if, I know you guys are developing, you know, a neighborhood plan in Johnson Heights, and you've got multiple property owners up there. If one person wants to go first, but that triggers a whole bunch of improvements of infrastructure that are gonna be very costly, and they wanna move forward at a faster pace than the other, they might be willing, if they have deep pockets, to finance that infrastructure, but they're gonna wanna make sure they're getting it back. And that would be a good example where, you know, a latecomer just might not give them the security that they need. And, you know, a development works agreement is secured by a bylaw, it doesn't expire, and then it sets out, you know, who would benefit from the infrastructure and then they would essentially pay that developer back. Another development work agreement situation is that the municipality wants to see an area developed and they could essentially fund that infrastructure installation and then put the development works agreement on the properties so that they would each pay their benefit allocation back to the municipality. They are undertaken by bylaw. There, there is a need for approval for the people within, like, the benefiting area. They are more complex. In certain situations, though, they can make a lot of sense and, you know, some municipalities use them more than others. A lot, if they have the opportunity, they're gonna do more of like a WSA agreement, like you're used to, where you're just negotiating with that property or with that developer to get that infrastructure in the ground and putting the responsibility on them. But if there's a number of benefiting properties that are, property owners that are all different in a, in an area, it's a tool that could be of interest to the city.
Just curious, you, you mentioned the difference in timing that possible developers might have or alternative types of development. There's no guarantee, like in Johnson Heights, there's no guarantee of what may unfold up there. There might be a hotel, there might be a storage place, there might be a residential area. The first guy in, if he's not willing to bite the bullet and fund the whole project, where does that leave us?
Mr. Henderson?
Yeah, well, I think through the chair, you know, if, it works a lot better if you know what's going to happen. You know, if you had a, a neighborhood plan that you're sticking to, ideally if the area was even pre-zoned, so that you could say, this, this development, you know, is going to benefit X amount in the different types of infrastructure services. Like, it's, it's not, it has to be, you know, fair, transparent, you know, based on the engineering studies. So it's not super simple, but you're going to have to determine, you know, how each property would benefit from that infrastructure. And you certainly would want to have, like, some planning in place to determine that. And then you remember that they also need to agree to the terms. So sometimes, you know, you're going to get, what I would recommend in this case is the developers that would benefit all work together, you know, to kind of determine, okay, what, what is our, what are our plans, who's getting what? You might have some approval or covenants on title limiting maximum density. Without a doubt, like, if you're just have like a greenfield site and you don't really know what's going on, it's probably not your best tool. But you have to have a pretty good idea of what's going to be happening in order to do the calculations.
Yeah, and I think that's where we're at. There, there's this one person that wants to develop. There's other, talk about it, there's conjectures, there's concepts, concepts that are thrown around, but there's no, no urgency to any of it. And so he's up there trying to figure out what he can do. And all of a sudden, we're having nothing happen. So, really, there's no, nothing, we have, we're just left in this limbo.
Yeah, and this would be one tool that at least, you know, the others know that they're going to have to pay eventually because they want to do something eventually, but, you know, it can allow the development to go ahead.
And I guess the, the trick is, you know, it's the latecomer thing. Does the city fund the, the road and the sewer line and the water line up to that zone? And say, this is where we'll encourage for future development. But, but for the first guy in, and the next guy who comes in five years, ten years later, you know, that guy, the latecomer, will have to pay his share. But the first guy in benefits from the infrastructure being put in. His portion of it is paid for by him, but it isn't the full cost, so it's, it's a weird.
Well, so to tell you, it's definitely a capital infrastructure fee for the city to put that in. Hopefully, we can encourage that to be built behind, right? So that we're not, we're going in subdivision, we don't want Jones' Cabin in the far corner, and no other, nothing for the next five years.
Yeah, it's sort of like building, they will come, sort of thing. You know, field of dreams. I don't know what, what the answer is.
Yeah, and that's something to really consider if it was financed by the municipality. Because you could put it in, but you might have to finance that debt for years and years.
But we could direct development, we're in a better position to focus development in that zone than an individual who's just got some land and wants to develop. A smaller portion of that, the overall piece. And just, just general discussion.
Thanks, councillor. Carry on, Mr. Henderson, please.
Mr. Mayor, I see Ms. Wade has her hand up on the.
Okay, so, sorry, Ms. Wade, I haven't got my laptop, so you're just a little tiny squiggle in the corner. So my apologies, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, worship. I just wanted to expand. One of the things that I think, in reference to councillor Elliot's questions, is that when we get into neighborhood planning, what Ms. Henderson is talking about is that we have to look at the best development tool to fund the off-site servicing that these new growth projects do. And the best way to do it is through comprehensive planning and putting those tools forward. So when we move into the stage, for example, with Johnson Heights, it is about meeting with the developers, and there's more than one, that are keen about developing. And we need to work with them to have agreement on what that form of financial tool is, which we will be bringing back to council. So I just wanted to let you know that, as we're talking through this, we're also working through some of these hard issues that we're facing in our first neighborhood plan.
Yeah, that's what I, there, there's a bit more strategy, and there are multiple people involved, not just one guy trying to develop an old farmstead.
That's correct, and that's the way we started the whole Johnson Heights. Our neighborhood plan is with all the owners who wish to develop their lands up there, which is about six. So that has been how we've moved forward with this, so we can have a comprehensive plan for financing those infrastructure needs, in particular, the connector road. And we're working with Ms. Henderson on that as well, as part of this. And it'll be, serve as an example, that'll come forward to council in a future council meeting so that we can have this robust discussion on how to finance those improvements.
Great, thank you.
All right, I will carry on if there's no additional questions.
Okay, I'm thinking.
So some of the other things to think about, just in, in these particular tools, as well as interrelationships between them. So, you know, as noted, the local improvement projects can't be included in a DCC program. Projects constructed under a latecomer agreement are not DCC-eligible, or DCC-funded projects aren't eligible for latecomer agreements. Works, like, in terms of frontage works, developed to a local standard that are normally constructed at time of subdivision or building permits, wouldn't be included in these, to be used for these tools. And then, again, oversizing beyond the local standard, that incremental capacity for access and extended services. It can be included into a, a DCC program, but then it just wouldn't be latecomerable if it was. And one other agreement, which is, I, I, I consider it fairly new, but it's probably, it's more than ten years now, is the phase development agreement. So it's kind of like a section two nineteen covenant with more oomph. It also is, is done by a bylaw, you require a public hearing, which I think is one of the reasons it hasn't really caught on as super favorable with the development community. I think some municipalities struggle to get the, the PDA process in line with a zoning approval process. It kind of came about because of a, of a court case and situation where a municipality asked for amenities. And then there was an election, and the next council downzoned that property, so the second phase couldn't go ahead after amenities were already contributed. So this essentially is like securing your zoning for a period of time, sort of between ten and up to twenty years, so that, you know, municipality couldn't rezone the property, which, you know, is pretty unlikely stuff. But it also allows developers to pay for infrastructure in phases. So you could get your zoning, you can move forward with your development, and then if some of the infrastructure is triggered later down the road, you could secure it, you know, to be done, you know, when a, a certain number of units or a certain area was to be developed. So there's some really nice things about it. You know, in terms of, like, in, in applicability to, like, the Johnson Heights situation, you know, the infrastructure there is primarily triggered, you know, right as soon as a development occurs. So it doesn't, you know, it doesn't benefit from phasing. Yeah, so if you're basically, like, you could pre-zone the whole development so that you're not, because some developers tend to say, oh, I just want to, like, zone a portion, and then I'll zone another portion later. And that beca, that's because, one, like, your, your tax bill goes up significantly theoretically once it's zoned. And then the other thing is, is all the conditions of development with that secured through zoning. Most developers don't necessarily, in a comprehensively planned area, have the deep pockets to put it all in place. So there's definitely some benefits to this one. You know, I, I had experience with one that it seemed like they had, you know, ten years was forever, and it's just, it's actually expiring now, and it's amazing how fast the time goes. So it is something to consider that way. It does make for a little more cumbersome process. And I think when push comes to shove on more simple developments, developers and municipalities would rather just stick to your development works agreements. And then, of course, you know, short and long-term borrowing is, is one of those sources of capital tools. But, you know, when it comes to funding growth, you know, not a lot of municipalities are, are taking out loans to, to benefit, you know, development that's, that's essentially benefiting private investors. However, there's times where, you know, you may have affordable housing projects or a downtown revitalization project that you're going to want to, to borrow, to fund. And more municipalities seem to be doing that right now with the, with the current rates. But that's just another thing to keep in mind, and there's obviously all kinds of implications to borrowing. But just didn't want to ignore it as a possible tool. And then obviously the differences and complexities of, of long-term borrowing and counter petitions of elector ascent as well associated with that. We just wanted to put it out there. And now, unless there's any other questions, I was going to dive into density bonusing and community amenity contributions.
Okay, carry on.
All righty. Okay, so council has init, has identified an interest to potentially consider community amenity contributions. I believe it's on your work plan. And Ms. Wade and I have discussed your interest in, in this. So I wanted to sort of provide council with some additional information and, as well as some considerations of steps forward as you move, as, if you wanted to pursue this any further. So, density bonusing and community, and community amenity contributions, there's a lot of considerations for a municipality to consider, especially smaller municipalities, as there's different approaches that can create a lot of administrative bur, burden and complexity to the development process. So I will ensure to kind of try to hit those points. The province put out this guide on the screen back in 2014. There was a lot of controversy, controversy around community amenity, amenity contributions, I'd say throughout, like, the early two thousands. Typically, you know, really started in around Metro Vancouver, and it became, you know, a pretty well-accepted form of, of collecting funds to help pay for growth in, in those areas. But it certainly has met resistance in other areas. It's met a lot of resistance in the central Okanagan, through one as an example. But, you know, many municipalities now have community amenity contributions in place. So I'll go over, you know, some, a couple of different approaches and things to think about if, if the city was interested in implementing a community amenity contribution policy. And also, density bonusing, which is a different approach, but kind of similar, similar thinking. So they're generally lumped in together. As, you know, through the zoning process, it's quite normal for municipalities across the province, outside of the Metro Vancouver area, where they have, you know, CAC policies really embedded in, in their development process. But that voluntary negotiations are taking place, you know, with developers when there's implications, you know, from growth, that, you know, maybe it's some additional park improvement contributions or funds to daycare, you know, and, and there's often funds that are collective through those processes that the developer will put forward to, in hopes that the municipality will look more favorably on their development. And so this all is tied into council's discretionary authority to approve zoning or not, which is really a significant power that council has in reverse zoning. But there's some really important things to think about, just to keep yourself on, like, strong legal footing. Again, like, you don't, you, if you have, if there's tools in place, such as the development cost charge tools, and, you know, a council didn't want to implement DCCs, it doesn't, you can't collect community amenity contributions to fund that type of infrastructure. It's really for things that aren't covered by the existing financial tools, such as city halls, park improvements over and above the DCC allowable expenses, you know, fire halls, city halls, rec centers, that type of thing, libraries. The, and I, I think quite purposely, the BC legislation doesn't define amenity. So it's typically defined, you know, by the municipality through their policies, documents, you know, really quite often, starting at the OCP level, neighborhood plans, into a community amenity project or community amenity policy. But the provincial guide does define community amenities as anything contributing to the attractiveness of a project or a neighborhood, and typically include aesthetic features, public spaces, and facilities to meet a range of social, cultural, recreational, and infrastructural needs of the community. So quite broad and, and fairly vague. So as mentioned again, you know, this sort of voluntary contribution. There's general authority derived from the Local Government Act and the Community Charter, based on council's discretion, discretionary authority to approve zoning. And it can take several forms. So community amenities, you know, can be, you know, green space, those types of things. Also, affordable housing is another one that is used more and more as we're sort of deepening this affordable housing crisis. And there's more municipalities, you know, through density bonusing or community amenities and, and basically establishing reserve funds for affordable housing, utilizing these tools. So, you know, these, if, if you're receiving these contributions, you know, you have to have reserve funds set up, and, and so on. It's, you need to be very strict with how you're accepting these funds and where those funds are going and how they're being used. So they shouldn't be paid for, again, like any DCC projects, anything that's covered under that DCC bylaw, frontage improvements or access or extended services. It's really more of those soft amenities that we discussed. So what's density bonusing? So density bonusing is essentially built right into your zoning bylaw. So it's certainly nice, because it's extremely transparent and predictable. And the development process isn't delayed by negotiations if that, if the zoning is in place with density bonusing built in. The development community certainly likes it, is more favorable of density bonusing than just straight contributions, especially when they're negotiated every time, because it's unpredictable. And they're often having to make expensive choices and investments. And without knowing what that amenity charge is going to be, it creates a lot of risk for them. So they're generally, and even by the province in the community amenity guide, let's just say a bit of a, a push or leaning to using the density bonusing approach. So basically, the developer can build to the base density, they have that right, and they could just essentially go, okay, dense, I can do, I could get additional density or a different type of use if I want to, but it's at their option. So, you know, they, if they're just happy without building that density bonus, then they just move on under the existing zoning or the underlying zoning without the bonus. And then generally, what the municipality wants to do, because if there's something that they get out of that bonus density, is they want to see it an incentive. So in this example on your screen, you've got essentially, like, half a floor of affordable housing. And if you build that half a floor of affordable housing, you get a whole floor of market housing. So, you know, there's a bit of an incentive, but the, but the municipality and the community's gaining from, from affordable rental housing. So that's an example that's often being used in communities. Even the city of Coquitlam, if you're going into their sort of transit-oriented development zone, which is also more affordable housing, denser development, less automobile reliant, they also have a two-tiered development approval process. So if you're, if you're going to take advantage of that density bonusing, you actually have a different stream for your development approval process as a means of expediting it. So it's another way to encourage the provision of that affordable housing.
Yes, Miss Henderson. Councillor Elliot has a question.
Thank you. Going back to the community amenities, one of the things that we've had with development, major developments, is that they give it a certain residential density, but they have to allocate some green space. Is that an amenity, is that a bylaw, is that unique to Revelstoke, or, or is that standard?
Many municipalities will, I mean, I guess there's different types of green space. So like, the five percent parkland provision is a tool that I didn't discuss, but that's, that's different amounts at time of subdivision. is a tool that I didn't discuss, but that's that's different amounts at time of subdivision. Uh, but there's a number of municipalities that will try to negotiate additional green space or park uh dedication beyond what's in the local government act as a community amenity for sure. And often um like cash contributions or the actual physical capital contribution of that park space. Uh, that that's quite, that's quite usual.
So the local government act requires green space on a certain size residential development. Is that, is that what I understand?
At time of subdivision, basically five percent of a of a parcel area um can be dedicated as parkland. Or a municipality could accept cash and lieu, like if there's no value of that land to the municipality. You could take cash and then put that into reserve fund for park acquisition. Um, which is it, which is a different tool that's a very standard uh tool at at time of uh subdivision.
Miss Wade, you have a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to add into that with uh Council Elliot's comments. Uh, the other thing is that when we have master planned communities, we can look at them in totality. And understanding that they're gonna be um, say, a phased subdivision. And that way we know triggers the five percent parkland in lieu. Of which we can do more of a comprehensive planning on parkland and linear uh trails, so that we can have a much more robust development, and that is negotiated as part of, say, that C D zoning. So that's another tool for it as well.
Follow-up, Counselor?
Yeah, i- i- is it mandatory or is it a city bylaw that makes that decision?
It is mandatory for five percent park land as per the L G A at time of subdivision, as Miss Henderson said.
Is it dictated the size of the of the land parcel that makes the five percent, or is that just in uh broad terms, say, everything applies to everyone?
Uh, it's a, it's in broad sense, and we and the municipality has the ability to do five percent in land or take it in cash and loop, which is up to the municipality to decide on that.
So, so I've got a small lot and I subdivide. Do I have to contribute five percent uh to the subdivision line or cash and loop? Uh, I mean, there's gotta be a scale.
There is a scale, and it's generally speaking, three lots or more. Um, and 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 uh Nancy just corrected me, I don't know if there's a minimum uh lot size, and I know it's three lots or more, but.
Answer?
Uh, thank you, Your Worship. Yeah, three lots or more, I believe, is is what it says in the legislation. And then, you know, as Ms Wade was commenting, you know, through the power of zoning approvals. Uh municipalities often secure more than that as park or environmentally preservation uh area, like environmentally sensitive area. And some municipalities will even have goals right into their O C P. Um, you know, to secure twenty percent or or larger. Um, or all environmentally sensitive areas, if that's in the interest of the municipality. Some municipalities will see that as a liability. Um, but yeah, there's, there's a five percent parkland dedication at subdivision, but that doesn't mean that municipalities can't negotiate more than that at time of zoning, and and that often does occur.
That's your question, Counselor? Have we got more uh parking from?
Well, I I know, I think it it plays into the environment, when you, when you negotiate that, you take it in whole. If there's a a school you heartbreak next year with a big soccer field, you don't ask for parking. So, so I think you gotta weigh it i- in context.
Great. All right, thanks for your comments. Thank you, Miss Henderson, you can carry on.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry, Council Charlotte has a question.
Yeah, just around the density bonusing, I've been trying to read through uh some of the examples, especially as we go through our zoning bylaw update, and I'm trying to figure out how and where is the concept of affordable housing defined? Is that something that's done by L G A or community charter, or is that something that's dependent locally? I've just, I've seen the con- that term defined so many different ways, and it leads to a lot of confusion.
Absolutely, it's a confusion. Any comment, Miss Henderson?
Yeah, that's true. I think that's something that m- many levels of government as well as municipalities are trying to nail down to be more consistent. You know, ultimately, you'll find affordable housing, you know, if affordable housing is seen as an amenity or density bonus defined by the municipality. Uh, but you're starting to see more and more um tied to more standard practices. And I think that's something too, through the Housing Action Plan, uh you know, providing some of those definitions and and utilizing them throughout uh the municipality um to define affordable housing, so that it's consistent.
Miss Wade?
Yeah, thank you, Worship, and I just wanted to say traditionally, it's been based on thirty percent rent geared to income programs. And part of the problems municipalities have had with that is because in order to build those forms of development. Uh, they're dependent on provincial or federal programs, and if you can't get them, you can't necessarily need it. So to Miss Henderson's um point, what we're looking at in the Housing Action now is more of a continuum of housing. And how do we define affordable housing um in a way that is more along the lines of what I would say attainable housing? And I know that um the thirty percent mark um of income is always sort of been the standard measure, but there has been some movement in that as well. So we have to consider that as we move forward in our O C P and our Housing Action Plan.
Thank you. Any further comment, Counselor? All right, carry on, Miss Henderson, please.
Okay, so there is a growing consensus that new development should not burden the local taxpayers, which is another reason that I think C A Cs are gain gaining um some favorability across municipalities. You know, there is a a growing demand for amenities as well as we're increasing, you know, densities. Uh, and especially even again, associated with affordability, you're starting to see higher density, smaller units, more people in tighter spaces. And you know, needs for for more open space, you know, larger rec centers, those types of things. And it's really important, um you know, that when you're defining amenities, you know, you're really looking at what Revelstoke needs. And so that's why there's really not one prescriptive approach, um you know, across all municipalities. Uh, so I'm just gonna talk a little bit more about uh density bonusing, you know, within the zoning bylaw. So the community amenity contribution guide certainly likes this, and the development community tends to like it being built right into your zoning bylaw as much as possible because it is so predictable and transparent. And you know, for when they're doing their financing, you know, they can figure, they can, they're can figure it out. Like, they like predictability and and um consistency. Uh, there's very clear authorization um with density bonusing, where community amenity contribution policies are you know, they they seem to be widely accepted, but they're a little, their their footing isn't quite as solid. Um, it's really important, I'm gonna explain a little bit about the the land economics to consider when you're looking at density bonusing. But it really should create a win-win-win for everybody, uh the developer, the municipality and the general community. Um, otherwise, you see, they they just, you might have them in place, but they just might not, might not be a lot of uptake on the on the bonus. Uh, so some little land economics to consider. Um. Is that, you know, sometimes you could say, okay, you're gonna, you're gonna provide this amenity in exchange for more density. Um, but sometimes the density, additional density doesn't have a lot of value to the developer. Um, and other times is also, um, you can use change of use, like a different type of use as well uh that the developer might be after, uh that creates value. So if um the new use or added density doesn't bring value, they just can't absorb the cost of the amenity. So then it's just not gonna happen, they're not gonna move forward with it. Um, so when, you know, the purchase of the land, they're looking, they have that entitlement to build the base zoning. And then so it's really like, does the bonus help them in any way? Are they gonna make it happen? Um, so you know, they have, you have to make sure like when they're, even if, you know, is that type of development gonna be approved? And then what's the anticipated financial performance of that development? And if there's no, you know, financial performance, even though it might seem good on paper, it's just not, not gonna happen. So it's not a straight-line relationship between density and value. Uh, I think one of the best examples to kind of, you know, think about that is if all of a sudden um additional density now is changing your construction practice. So you're going from wood to concrete, as an example. Just getting, um, you know, going from, say, six stories to eight might sound like a lot of density and that's great, but they've just gone from, in most situations, I know there's some taller wood buildings now, but they've gone from, you know, wood to concrete. And so they might actually not see a margin or have increased until they're hitting like twelve stories. Um, so that's just an example, it's not a straight-line value. Uh, so the added costs aren't always offset by revenue. And then, you know, the market doesn't support those prices, and it just doesn't move forward, and certainly seen that happen. Uh, some municipalities will also give added density, um like a density bonus just for putting parking like under the building instead of surface. Uh, so you know, it's benefiting uh sort of the landscape, and then they're also getting additional additional uh density because of that. It's not always um. It's not always just pure uh area. Some of the core uh principles, um, you know, is it, it's gotta be financially viable. Uh, you'll, you'll see a lot of uh discussion regarding uh land lift. So there's, there's generally a couple of different approaches to community amenity contributions or through through um density bonusing, like through density bonusing, you're basically saying, if you do this, you get this. And but when you're using community amenity contributions, you'll see two approaches, one using land lift. So what's that additional density worth? And then the municipality tries to capture a percentage of that increase in value. Typically, the municipalities try to capture between twenty-five and seventy-five percent of the land value increase as their community amenity contribution. Um, really depends where you are. I think in Metro Vancouver, um, you know, they're definitely at higher percentages. And then smaller communities would that definitely be at the the lower end. Um, to sort of to make sure it's working and uh and not deterring development. Uh, so it does need to be an incentive for the developer and the landowner. Um, they must be clearly tied to defined amenities, so what you don't want is your staff in a situation where you know, they have to be negotiating community amenity contributions, but they can't really speak about what they're for. Uh, so most municipalities will be really clear, you know, that they're trying to, you know, geez, our recre- our recreation facility is maxed out. You know, at based on our current population levels and growth is, you know, really driving the need for a new one. So we're trying to, you know, collect funds to pay for that rec center. Uh, that'll also make it a lot more um of interest to the development community and knowing that they've contributed to something that might attract residents to the community as well. Um, it's gotta be consistent, you know, transparent and predictable and legal, which we've mentioned before. Um, you know, you wouldn't wanna look like you're selling zoning or going around uh downzoning your community so that everybody who wants to develop has to come in and go through this negotiation or pay these additional fees. Because they are attached to rezoning. Um, if the property is already zoned, there'd be no uh community amenities uh payable.
As a Ryan has a question, Henderson.
Yeah, just wondering if you could walk through an example of what that twenty-five to seventy-five percent value looks like. I'm just having a hard time wrapping my head around it, so an example might be helpful.
Okay, I have, um, and maybe we can talk about this as sort of part of like potential next steps. Like, I actually have um performance that we could like, I don't have them with me today. But if this is of interest to council to learn more about it, I could show like, if you ha- if you do this, this is what it looks like on a spreadsheet, and then what the land lift would be and how it would affect the development costing. I didn't go quite that deep today. Uh, but you know, essentially, if you're increasing uh density and the price of the land goes from one hundred thousand to two hundred thousand, and you're taking twenty-five percent of the land lift. Then you'd have a community amenity contribution of twenty-five thousand dollars. Okay?
And that could be either paid in cash or like into that reserve or put towards a project?
Yeah, depending, depending on your pal- policy, and and it's kind of like back to all financial tools. It depends. Um, so generally, most municipalities are like, okay. Um, if you're, you can negotiate at time of zoning. Um, you could have density bonus provisions in place for areas that you're really clear on. And then you could also have uh community amenity contributions that are set. Uh, so you could say, you could do it by by lot or by square footage. Um, so that, okay, if you have, if you're rezoning for a single-family lot, um, it's gonna be five thousand dollars per lot. And then that five thousand dollars would go into a community amenity reserve fund. And then you would wanna make sure that you're very specific as to what those amenities and what that fund could be used for.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Um, the other thing that you see sometimes is the developer uh and I've experienced this quite a bit in in my career, where the developer is actually saying hey, um, I'd love you to look more favorably in this zoning council, I'd like to make a hundred thousand dollar contribution to X, Y, or Z. Uh, and that's where you kind of talk about voluntary contributions. Um, generally, really great, and we'll talk about some things to think about should you come across that situation in a sec. Um.
Uh, Council Elliot has a question.
Uh, Miss Henderson, just uh on the amenities, if the amenity that we need is housing. Does this complicate matters? If we're adding more and more requirements, if we're short on housing and affordability is the issue. And the demand for housing has gone through the roof, but we don't have a supply of it. Are we talking the wrong thing? Should we just do what we can to increase the supply of housing?
Yeah, that is a very key point to consider. Um, so sometimes, you know, density bonusing is encouraging a certain type of housing. Affordable housing is an example that maybe the market isn't providing. Um, so you might be needing these tools to encourage a certain type of housing. Um, but you wouldn't wanna get into, because quite often, if you're not seeing that development. You know, you wanna be really careful about layering more costs as a barrier to that development.
Yeah, I'm gonna go on. I wonder, you define what's, what are the obstacles to housing? And do what you can to streamline it.
Exactly, and I I think these are, like, these are, this is why, and you know, when I kind of talk about next steps, is you know, it's kind of easy to come in and talk about the core principles and they got, you know, and just sort of some of the 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 rationale and and ideas behind it, but what's, I can't underline and emphasize this enough, is it's so important to look at the community itself, because you can't take a community amenity contribution from another policy, another community and just apply it to Revelstoke. Uh, because it really needs to work for you, and you also really need to know what the amenities are that you want. And for one community, it might be a rec center or a daycare. But for Revelstoke, maybe it's like non-market affordable housing or workforce housing. And can you set up, you know, density bonusing as an example to ensure that that occurs? Yeah, you can. I mean, you can, I mean, I wouldn't say ensure, but to incent that, yes, it's one of the tools you can use to incent achieving a certain type of development, that maybe the market's dragging their feet on a little bit. Um, and then the other thing is if you're also seeing a certain type of like high-end uh resort development. Um, you know, the high demand, high supply happening, if you had community amenity contributions on that, you could also secure funds, you know, in the municipal coffers to incent affordable housing or fund affordable housing projects. Um, so it's just another way of maybe taking from one area to give to another area that the market's not delivering.
Miss Wade?
Yeah, just just to dovetail a little bit on that, so you know, one of the things is if we had an affordable housing fund where we could actually, through the community amenities. Uh, we would collect some money that would be earmarked in a reserve fund for affordable housing. It'd be a way of, say, taking our lands that we have and having a way to do capital projects to build the housing that we may need or match a fund with B C Housing or C M H C. So that would be the way that could be used for affordable housing.
Any other comments or questions at this point, Counselor? Hang on, carry on, Miss Henderson.
Thank you. Uh, so again, like you must clearly define, you know, what your amenities are, and it could very simply be more affordable housing. Um, it must be consistent and transparent, predictable and legal. Uh, in terms of legal, you'll often uh see uh or hear, like, it must be like rational proportional to the development. Um, you know, so that this development is creating an impact and you're creating, you're Um, you know, so that this development is creating an impact and you're creating, you're receiving funds to help pay for that impact. Um, as noted, like you could be doing in-kind uh negotiations, you know, based on like the developer even wanting to provide space. Uh, in the, in the building for affordable housing or daycare. Um, so they can often maybe deliver um the contribution rather than paying a set fee. Uh, so kind of an in-kind contribution or monetary. Um, you don't want to look like you're selling zoning. Uh, that's something if you are, you know, meeting. You know, with the development community, sometimes you'll, you'll hear that term, like you're selling zoning. It's really important that council always has an open mind. Um, and so if the public's really against a certain development, that you have an open mind and that you're, you're certainly able and willing to turn that down. Um, you know, after public hearing. So it's just, it's just important to, you know, careful, like careful how you. Uh, speak about amenities as you're going through the rezoning process. Um, and they should be limited to capital costs earmarked for specific projects. And kept in their reserve fund for intended projects is noted. And as I've alluded to, you know, the key conditions for success of C A Cs or density bonusing. No matter what approach you use, is there must be market demand, you know, for that additional floor area. Uh, if there's not, um, it's unlikely, you know, to, you're unlikely to receive a lot of funds. And development under the new proposed zoning or added density provision must be financially viable. So it's really important. Um, you know, we would recommend like residual land value approach, for example, and. Uh, you know, bring in our land use economists and, and essentially do like some pro formas on developments in Revelstoke. Uh, to make sure it is viable. Um, and I think as I mentioned in the next slide, like it's really important. Cause the market's changing all the time that you're also revising and um reviewing your policy regularly. Uh, some of the other considerations, if you're considering implementing is, you know, there's no universal best practice or formula. So it's really important to, you know, look at your own community. Um, we certainly have lots of best practices and examples, like we're happy to share. Um, but you know, it's, it's really about making sure it makes sense for Revelstoke. Um, it must be driven by core principles and, and objectives in terms of, you know, what you, what you want. Uh, I think we've talked a little bit, like what are the barriers to development? And the development community typically wants like certainty. Um, and then also, you know, different approaches and, and maybe flexibility of using the different approaches based on different situations. And yeah, you have to do it for your community. What, what works somewhere else might not work for you. Uh, and revisit it. And if the market uh is, you know. Taking off, you know, you probably people are be gladly paying the community amenity charges from five years ago. And if you have a major correction, uh, it might just be another uh barrier to development. Um, but you're certainly going to probably see more demands for amenities as, as the community grows. So it's certainly worth. Uh, further consideration. Uh, and it is recommended, um, using both the C A C approach, which is like. Based on the rezoning application and, and negotiation or fees at time of, of zoning. And density bonus approaches where you know what you want in a certain area and you just put. Um, the zoning in place, uh, which, you know, is a lot less cumbersome as an administrative process. Cause if every development that comes to town needs a rezoning. Um, you know, you're probably going to get like backlogs in your development services department and slower process times. And it can be quite cumbersome. Um. So yeah, and you just want to, I think we've mentioned these things here, but you want to be, uh, the other thing is using a stepped approach. Uh, so you might not like, we kind of mentioned using land lift like twenty-five to seventy-five percent. You might not want to kind of come out of the gates at, at seventy-five percent. You might want to start small. And gain some acceptance in the development community, see how it's working and then potentially like in- increase your costs. Um, you also could use different uh payment, like different fees or community amenity fees. Associated to different types of development as well. So for example, if you were wanting to see uh multifamily, small unit. Development, you could have a, a much lower fee uh for those and like say a single family development or on a state lot, a larger fee. Um, so you can consider that as well. Um, yeah, and I mentioned the cash or even on in-kind, cause some, some developers are happy to try to accommodate. Certain amenities within their building. And yeah, keep it simple, um, especially when you're starting and especially consider, considering you are a smaller community. You know, you administratively, you know, using land lift negotiations at zoning applications. Some municipalities, you know, such as like the District of West Vancouver uses that approach quite frequently. Um, but that's going to slow down your processes. You're likely going to have to bring in outside consultants. And uh, I wouldn't recommend that as an approach, but uh certainly something we can consider more if, if council wants to. To consider these in more detail. Um, so just some other, like, it's about wrapping up here. But uh, the summary of recommended practices is right from the guide. So again, you know, something that, you know, reiterating, like avoiding the legal. Uh, risk, like you're negotiating these, um, they're, you're not imposing them, it's not a tax. Uh, making sure you're really clear as to what the amenities are and in different areas of the municipality. Um, you know, again, seeking modest contributions. So if you go too high, you know, what are the impacts? Is it going to deter development? Is it good, what are the impacts on affordability? Um, utilizing, you know, from our last development finance discussion, development cost charge principles. Uh, is a really good way to look at um community amenities. So making sure that. They're related to the impact, so rational and connected uh to the developer and that it's fair, you know. So if you're charging one developer because they've got deep pop- pockets more than another developer who, whose pockets aren't so deep. Um, you know, it, it's not, it wouldn't be considered fair. So you want to make sure that you're being fair. And uh encouraging and engaging the development community, you know, right from the get-go. And um, and bring them into the conversation early and ongoing. Uh, and also like one thing when things are funded uh by community amenity contributions or development cost charges. For that matter, it's really nice, like when you're doing the city press releases to just acknowledge that. Um, that they, that this is being funded by, um, by growth. So those are just uh good things to take, take, take into consideration. So, you know, really now I guess it's just more like you've identified the desire to learn more. Uh, about C A Cs. Uh, I know I'm just talking to Ms. Wade. Uh, you know, she asked to that this be included because of sort of your strategic priorities and, and this is a, an identified. Area that you wanted to consider. Um, so really the question like over to you is there. Would you like to consider more details or the development of a community amenity policy? Uh, at the city, um, we have, you know, a potential methodology that I, I have on a slide. Uh, if you wanted to consider it in more detail. And um, and to us, it would be, you know, that iterative process, like looking at the best practices and other examples. Uh, but also like involving the development community. And um, and you know, this is just, I have a slide with a bit of an example of, of a methodology. But we're certainly open to going about it a different way and a way that works with the city. So just like to hear. Um, yeah, your thoughts and if there's anything else that you'd like us to consider. I do have a couple of other slides just about next steps in general, but. Happy to.
Any comments from council, Councilor?
Yeah, I think this is great. I'm so excited to learn more about it and I think we've all been pretty eager to. To get this information. Um. Uh, like I'm curious about time, like I know you have the message ball and you hear on that next slide, which is great, but if there's any way. To expedite it, like what would you recommend? Because I, I hear that you're, you're recommending for a smaller community, you know, if we can agree on. What it's going to be about and simplify it. And maybe it's about affordable housing or whatever we discuss. Um, but, but what are the steps that can be kind of expedited?
Senator.
I will just uh bring up this next slide here. So. You know, this would be sort of recommended methodology. Again, we're, we're totally flexible to meet the community's needs. But I think looking at, you know, some of the, the context, learning a bit more about. Uh, what's happening in the community, uh, what are the, the type of amenities that are needed? And if it's just to focus on affordable housing and that's where council really wants to focus at the beginning. Um, you know, that certainly can sort of streamline some of this, uh, using those examples for the communities that have been sort of successful at. Encouraging affordable housing. Uh, so we review, you know, the practices and comparative communities. We bring that forward to you for a discussion. We'd have a workshop. We talk about, you know, what the, what the principles are. How, how these uh types of policies have worked in some communities, maybe some of the barriers. Um, what might, what you think might work for Revelstoke? Um, we can sort of develop a few options in terms of like the case study. Cause what we'd want to do is make sure that they're implementable, you know, that financial viability that I talked about. So we'd look at that and then after we have that in place, that would be a good time to go talk to the, the development community. Uh, because I think what, you know, we want to have like open books. This is sort of, we're figuring out how does this look compared to your. Experiences and your pro forma, um, get their feeling, maybe, you know. What are the barriers to them moving forward with development in, in Revelstoke? I'm sure, um, the construction industry also has. Uh, issues maybe with uh staff housing and affordability, like they may be quite sympathetic to this and wanting to see the city. Uh, make progress. So, you know, have those types of conversations and then we put together a report. Uh, with the financial analysis, you know, the stakeholder information. And um, and kind of put together what could be a community amenity policy recommendation for Revelstoke. And then we, we come back to council, uh, to present that to, with your staff.
And, and what's a timeline estimate? I know it can vary based on what information we get at these different input sessions, but. For like a more simple version of it, because it can be modified, I guess later on. What do you think is a reasonable estimate?
Um, well, I think we could definitely like put together the ba- the best practices and um, the comparative analysis. And come back for another workshop by year end.
Ms. Quinn, you have a comment?
Yes, I just wanted to chime in a little bit. The timing of this is actually um, coming together quite well with the. Uh, growth scenarios that we're working on as well as the housing action plan, cause we've just finished our core need housing analysis. And Urban Matters has been helping us with that as well as Urban Systems. So we have um, a good team that can look at this in relation to the other pieces that are also in play now. Because that will help um, understanding the land inventory that we have and whether our, our economics is in relation to land, land lifts. And tolerance as well. So the timing of it's pretty good. Um, but I, I'm a little cautionary with knowing what. This department's capacity is, um, and but working with urban systems, we'd be able to probably. Do a timeline um, and work that through with all the other items that we have on our plate.
And so at this point in time, would be possible to come back with some suggestions for council regarding how we move forward. And uh, see if there's an appetite to deal with that.
Yep, your worship, we could certainly put together something and, and come back. And maybe come back at uh next month's committee of the whole with sort of uh what we would propose, what this would look like, if that is acceptable to council.
Sounds great.
Okay, Councilor, you have a comment?
Uh, yeah, I think that sounds great. I'm just curious whether the cost is already in the budget or if this would affect costing in a way for the project.
Did you hear that, Ms. Quinn?
Yes, I did. And I'm, uh, we'll be meeting with Director of Finance next week and we'll look through our budgets and I would be able to report back on that.
Great.
All right. Any other comments, Councilor?
Just uh, maybe, I don't know, you've got comparables there, comparative, comparable communities. Are we overcomplicating this? Uh, i- i- is this overkill for a community our size? Well, that's what I'm, so I, I don't know. Uh, I, I'm just, just, yeah.
So, Mr. Thacker?
I think what the topic of discussion of, of looking at community amenity and looking at these issues, um. I think with a bit of, a bit of, a bit more digesting, um. I don't, I don't disagree with, with um, Sanders' assessment and given the. Given the growth pressures that the city is facing, I, I think. There, there is some merit in looking at this, how much and over what period of time and capacity issues is, I think is where the. Other part of the rubber is the road. You can do lots of these things, but how much can? And how much value is there over what period of time is, it would be the good question to ask. I think that's a, that's a bit of an iterative process. Ms. Henderson mentions that, but I think it's absolutely worth getting into because I think the city is buying in some ways.
Oh, I agree. I, I think we.
This is my own professional opinion.
I just don't know. I mean, I, 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 I understand community amenity issue and the bonusing options that are out there. I just wonder if, if this is normal for a eight thousand size community. That, what are numbers? That's another debate.
Well, we've been talking about this for quite a while and to see this come to uh, to council. Able to weigh in on it, I think is a bonus. And what I'm hearing from some of the councils is definitely, this is a great way to inform you. So, you have a comment?
Uh, yeah, I just, I think we can keep it simple, right? Like Ms. Henderson was saying, like as long as we. Keep it really transparent in terms of what it's all about. Then it's like putting money away in the bank, right? Like we, we may as well start sooner. Whether or not we have like a very clear, I mean, we will have a clear plan for those funds, but like how that grows as the. Community grows is like future council's problem, but like we want to get that process underway now. Before more and more development opportunities slip away from us, like. Uh, like it's great to see this come forward and I'm very excited about these timelines, but also like. Anyways, yeah, the, the initial inquiry to have this information was in like November of twenty nineteen. So like. Imagine had we, had we done, and of course, like there's way bigger projects that are very important that I'm grateful are. We're all very grateful are happening instead, but it's like, that's two years where developers may have been contributing to these. C A Cs had we had this tool in place.
Council can make this as complicated or as simple as I think as your desire. And my, my recommendation, not over, overcomplicated, keep it, keep it simple, I guess, principle. And try not to bite off too much, but I think it's, if, if you are interested in this, it's worth, it's worth. I'm sure staff could come up with a, with a, a list pretty quick. Of some things that the city knew that I'm, I'm not aware of, but I, I don't think it would be an overly, overly large process.
Well, I, I think investigating and getting a report back what, what we might need and how we might look for our account today. There's an awful lot that we're hitting on. Massive, long by O C P on, on down the line, as a D C C revision and all these things. I'm saying. You can spray yourself very thin.
And that was my comment about capacity and looking at what, what else is going on. And so if, 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 if I could get a. If council would could bear with me, I'd like to engage, cause I'm just going to meet with Marianne. And uh, I think I'd get a better hand. I, I don't think it would be a. Uh, I, I've been through this before, but I, like I say, I don't think it has to be super complicated.
Well, if we can keep it simple and get some productive productivity out of it, then, then I see value.
And I see that's what Ms. Wade and Ms. Henderson are talking about, a simple process so that we can move forward. So, Ms. Wade, can I leave it with you? You can discuss it with Mr. Thacker and Ms. Henderson and then. Maybe we have some simple process to look at in next month's meeting. Would that work?
Uh, yes, your worship. And uh, we have an order, I know that uh, to Councilor Ryan's, we talked about this earlier in twenty nineteen. In the fall, uh, but we've had to make some, you know, some amendments to our O C P to allow for density bonusing. And making those corrections and the zoning, which is well on the path now. And that we want to make this simple. We don't want to make this complicated. And we want to start with, um. A simple process and see that it's viable and we have to engage with the community. Um, in regards to some particular to development community. So it requires engagement as well.
And thanks. Yeah, that makes sense. It's great to see that all the processes are kind of coming together.
Yeah.
Yes. It's been a long two years, I know, but we're, they're all falling into places, the building blocks now.
That's great. Thank you.
All right. So, Ms. Henderson, uh, next steps, uh, where are we at? Can we round this up?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, you know, I, we've, I think just had that conversation about anything else you want to do with community amenity contributions. Uh, I know that we're working with uh, Ms. Wade and. Uh, I know that we're working with uh, Ms. Wade and, and your team there on growth scenarios as part of the OCP process. And you know, as Ms. Wade also mentioned, the Johnson Heights Neighborhood Plan and the Associated Development Finance uh, Strategy. We've got an inflationary adjustment to the DCCs coming uh, very soon to you. And we recommend that a council considers another one in 2022. Uh, continuing on, uh, as you're doing with many OCP and master planning uh, processes. And I believe you have a, a complete comprehensive DCC review uh, scheduled for 2022. Um, which is, it's been quite some time and a highly recommended uh, process. And is there any other additional steps or information that council would like to receive regarding uh, the development finance tools?
Any comments, Councilors?
I can say, what, the, the biggest conflict we had, one of the major ones was the DCC pending problem. And, and, and the, the, the uproar that was created when, when the DCC revision came during the previous term was our shopping list, our list of infrastructure that was needed. We had a $30 million water treatment plant that required an upgrade. And now it's been reduced, waste, 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 wastewater management. Uh, but it's been reduced down to 13 million and we've got 10 million in funding for it. So, so it's a $20 million reduction right there, if you, if you weigh all of, which is fantastic. Uh, I think it's a hard look at that infrastructure and what we need. That should be our shopping list and that should determine our DCC uh, rates and, and structure going, going into the future. And I think that needs to be taken on a hard look at.
Any comments? We're talking about, as Council Elliot's, uh, related to infrastructure is a big thing in the, in the uh, community. Uh, what we've got under the ground, what we don't see, that sort of thing. Um, so we'll work towards uh, mitigation of some of those issues. And, and so, you know, the late, uh, the wastewater treatment plan and uh, and our plans that we're dealing with, infrastructure, that sort of thing will come as well. And when we're talking about development services, so what we've talked about here. Um, not sure if there's any other finance tools that uh, that we think that we need to use. But definitely, we've been talking about uh, the DCCs uh, the last couple of terms, and then we've been talking about these community amenity contributions. So I think you guys are well aware of what the community wants to see and what our council wants to see. Council Ryan?
I have a question and I think it's a little unrelated, but I just want to throw it out there. Uh, are there any communities that, I, I know that UBCM has put a motion to the province to have land transfer tax from municipalities? Something that we can get in on, because province already does that? Is that, do you know, Ms. Henderson, of any other communities that have been able to successfully push for that in BC?
I'd have to get back to you on that. I can definitely look around, you know, as a different, like more of a, an alternate revenue source.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, is that the?
Not off the top of my head, but I can, can answer that.
Cool. Thanks.
Very good question. Any other comments?
One more, sorry.
Yep.
Part, part of the uh, DCC discussion and the amenity discussion talks about uh, infrastructure, infrastructure I mentioned. But I talked on the water sewer treatment plant, but I talked about roadways in, in previous discussions with council and the way we live. And I think we should be looking at that. Once the master plan comes, then, then we can, we need that first before we can have a DCC discussion. And that's again, part of, well, if we're gonna have a broad discussion, we need a master plan of where we're gonna live and how we're gonna live. We need, we need, and then our.
The master plan is good for the DCC.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
When is the DCC program supposed to be complete? Do we, do we have a timeline on that?
And comment on that, Ms. Wade?
Uh, yes, your worship. So the DCC, we need all the master plans for infrastructure first. Before we can do that, we don't have those yet. We're hoping that we have something for the end of the year. Um, maybe early January, because that also informs the OCP. Once we have those, then we can identify DCC projects and start a conversation with those. So that's kind of where we're at with that. Okay. And I just wanted to clarify that, you know, the community amenity policy is for um, projects that would not be covered under the DCC. So we have to look at two separate paths here.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. Any further comments? Uh, we've got your presentation, Ms. Henderson.
Well, that concludes my presentation. Thank you very much for having me.
All right. I appreciate you coming and, and giving our presentation. It's, it made it clear for us and we appreciate that. Any comments from councilors?
Oh, it's great. Well, thank you.
Thank you again, Ms. Henderson. Appreciate your time. Very much so. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, uh, time's going on here, so I'm gonna uh, put the pressure on Ms. Braun and her group for uh, Destination Management Framework presentation. Uh, so Ms. Braun, do you want to uh, lead that off and then we go into your colleagues? How do you feel?
Thank you, your worship. You can hear me okay?
We can.
I don't have a great internet connection up here in Northern Ontario, so if I disappear, uh, Megan Tabor will take it from here. But essentially, I would like to introduce Megan Tabor to present to you um, the Destination Management Plan Framework, which she has been working on with our Economic Development Officer Jamie over the past while, along with Carlisle and Company Consulting. And it's basically the first step on the roadmap, working towards a more comprehensive plan for the destination that goes beyond tourism marketing. And uh, she'll present the concept to you and I'll bring it back to how it relates to our department and the overall industry in our region. And if you can give uh, Megan permission to share the screen, there we go.
All right. Thank you. Turn it on, Megan.
Great. Thank you so much, Ingrid, and thanks for having us today. Um, I know I came and presented to council probably around April of this year. And I had alluded to the fact that we are moving more towards um, a Destination Management Framework. And that's what I'm here today to present to you. So traditionally, Tourism Revelstoke has been contracted by the City of Revelstoke as the destination marketing organization. However, there are definitely a few reasons why we've decided that the time is now to start the process of moving more towards a destination management model. First of all, we want to stay ahead of the curve and we want to be a progressive organization. Um, moving towards a more holistic and inclusive approach to destination management. Our industry is asking for it. So our tourism industry itself um, is wanting to see this change. Each fall, we survey tourism stakeholders to rate us on how we're doing regarding our priorities. And in our last survey, which we have results from fall of 2020, results showed that 41% of our own tourism industry said that our performance on the priority of long-term tourism planning, which includes a shift from destination marketing to a more holistic destination management approach, had been poor or average. So this demonstrates an increased desire to manage our destinations sustainably, and that's even just from within our own industry. Anecdotally, I'm sure you are seeing, and we're also seeing more feedback from the community on a variety of tourism initiatives. Um, we know we need to engage residents more on the future of tourism. And finally, uh, we know that destinations with an effective destination management function present a higher capacity to keep pace with tourism trends, to innovate, to adapt to consumer patterns, and they're also more resilient to changes. So the scope of the Destination Management Framework was to accomplish the following. Um, we wanted to look at the evolution from a destination marketing organization to a destination management model that would be unique to Revelstoke. So it'd be articulating the role that the tourism sector plays in destination stewardship. We want to provide a foundation for discussion to engage all stakeholders. And we wanted to have a path forward for a plan for next steps for a full-scale destination management plan. So what is a destination management plan? So um, you can think of a destination management plan similarly to an OCP for tourism. So it's intended to be a guiding document that supports the community's tourism vision. It identifies destination management roles. It supports broader community values for quality of life. And it considers both destination stewardship and economic prosperity. The tourism vision should align with the OCP and other municipal visions. So last week, we presented this framework to the OCP focus group and it was very well received. According to Destination Next, the most effective destination organizations strive to enhance the competitiveness and sustainability of their destinations within a harmonious relationship between both residents and visitors. So they also have support of government officials and area residents who believe that the visitor industry positively impacts the local economy and elevates the overall quality of life. When government and residents agree on the value of the visitor industry to accelerate long-term economic and community development, then it's much easier to build support for new initiatives that benefit both locals and visitors. So this is a really high-level overview of what destination management looks like. There are four key function areas. Destination marketing, destination insights, destination development, and destination sustainability. And I'll just um, touch on each one of these briefly. So destination marketing, uh, we're very familiar with. It's traditionally the space that we've been operating in. Um, it's marketing that promotes a destination with the purpose of attracting visitation. Uh, so visitor-focused, you see the destination brand, the visitor experience, the visitor promotional strategy. Um, and then from a community-driven side, uh, we have community, communications and public relations with community and industry. Destination insights, so within this function area, we're gathering and using information about the destination community and turning it into actionable insights to inform better decisions and planning at every level. So from a visitor-focused side, we look at visitor market profiles, who are our current and previous visitors? What is their sentiment of the destination? Identifying what types of experiences could enhance the destination's offerings based on um, variety of research and insights. And then from a community-driven perspective, we look at engagement, resident sentiment. So residents' perception and views for support or challenges within tourism and the impacts that tourism has on the quality of life in the destination. Destination development is the strategic planning for and advancement of tourism supply by providing compelling experiences, quality infrastructure, and remarkable services to entice repeat visitation. So Revelstoke has positioned itself as a resort destination, but we're also a working community where residents share space and amenities with visitors. The community must therefore strive to be simultan- simultaneously a place where people want to visit, but people also want to live. Um, so from a visitor-focused perspective, we look at product development, industry development, visitor services. And from a community side, we look at asset management, infrastructure, workplace development, and economic development. And then finally, we have destination sustainability, which is really at the core of the destination management framework. Um, destination sustainability supports tourism as a force for good and ensures that tourism doesn't come at the expense of the environment, local economies, or the community's well-being. The United Nations World Tourism Organization defines sustainable tourism as tourism fully aware of its current and future economic, social, and environmental impact, taking into account the needs of visitors, the industry, the environment, and local communities. Um, so from a visitor-focused perspective, that's attracting the right value-aligned visitor and understanding who those visitors are and um, those visitors that we want in our community who are respectful. Um, from a community-driven standpoint, we look at crisis management, policy and funding, and the creation of programs that support sustainable social, environmental, economic development goals. Um, so we've heard council talk about sustainable tourism as a buzzword for the future. And I just wanted to clarify the definition um, between sustainable tourism and regenerative tourism. So sustainable tourism would be leaving something so that it exists in a constant state, not causing any additional damage for the future. However, regenerative tourism is the idea that tourism leaves place better than it was before. And as we're currently working towards sustainable, uh, a sustainable tourism model as the first step, our ultimate goal would be moving beyond sustainable tourism and into that regenerative model. So we've been making some small steps over the past year. Um, this includes building a sustainability shortlist, which identifies areas in which we're going to promote because they have capacity and interest for visitors and avoiding the promotion of areas that are not set up for visitor infrastructure. So an example would be on Lake Revelstoke. We don't do any promotion around Secret Beach, but we do promote Martha Creek, which is a managed recreational site. We've also launched educational campaigns that live on our website and they're promoted through digital efforts on downtown informational panels and accessible to visitors through the Visitor Information Center. And then we've been piloting a new style of campaign that's all about giving back. 10 for the Trails gave $10 donations to the Revelstoke Cycling Association for visiting mountain bikers and encouraged visitors to match our donation. And then on the next few slides, I'm just gonna highlight quickly a small campaign that we just ran this fall, um, that we're really proud of. So Thanksgiving Back was our first attempt at a regenerative tourism campaign. We ran this initiative on two weekends leading up to Thanksgiving. There were five volunteer projects led by local nonprofits listed on this slide. Each nonprofit was given $500 as a compensation for planning their event. Uh, visitors signed up to participate in a volunteer day in exchange for their accommodation, which was reimbursed up to $500. And they committed to one volunteer day and then had the rest of their time to explore Revelstoke. The outcome of this campaign was that we had 39 visitors participate and they came from both British Columbia and Alberta. Many of our volunteers actually chose to spend additional nights over and above their complimentary nights. Uh, volunteers actually chose to stay at a wide variety of accommodation, so they're all listed on this slide. And the campaign really attracted that value-aligned visitor that I was talking about. So somebody who respects and fits in with the local way of life. Um, the visitor that aligns with the ethos of our destination and the type of visitor who shares a respect for our environment and knows how to be a low-impact traveler. Um, and these visitors now have a real connection to our community after having contributed to a project. Um, I personally participated in the RCA Trail Day and I truly got to see firsthand what regenerative tourism can look like. The people who attended this trail day were the exact kind of visitors we want here. And you could tell that the day had a very big impact for them. And then we've also received some great comments from visitors as well. And um, I do kind of want to read the first one because I thought it was very, very meaningful. Um, Thanksgiving Back has given us one of the most special and memorable weekends ever. Chris and I spent yesterday at the Revelstoke Railway Museum, helping them relocate artifacts and tidy up the museum uh, as the museum readjusts one year into the pandemic. I can wholeheartedly say that while we certainly worked hard, our time at the museum was truly a special and memorable, memorable one, complete with a private behind-the-scenes tour after. Museum Director Jim Cullen's passion for his work was positively infectious. And the sweet and kind board member, George Perkins, gave us a first real-hand account of railway history in Revi. We left our day deeply fulfilled and floating on a cloud. We found some wonderful new friends here thanks to this incentive. We'd like to thank Revelstoke and whoever thought of this incredible idea for giving us an educational, community, community-oriented fun experience that we'll never forget from the bottom of our hearts. Thank you. We'll be back. And so that was a visitor from Trail BC. Um, so who leads the process of a destination management plan? Uh, definitely requires strategic leaders to align community stakeholders towards achieving a collective destination vision. And from this inclusive process, the new Revelstoke Tourism Alliance will be established as a destination-wide collaborative, collaborative group to represent the alignment of community and tourism interest in Revelstoke. So this alliance would capture all official organization roles as well as individual stakeholders. And we can probably mobilize the Revelstoke Tourism Advisory Committee for this with additions to best represent the community, various interest groups, businesses, and residents, including a representative from the social sector. Staff support from Tourism Revelstoke and CED, along with some of our other business center partners, uh, will also be the charge. So next steps, um, moving towards a destination management plan is definitely a journey. And the journey begins with aligning community stakeholders for support and action. And we're really at the start of this journey, so you can see highlighted and red where we are. Um, currently, we're presenting the Destination Management Framework to various stakeholder groups. Um, and we've, uh, it's been well-received from the Revelstoke Accommodation Association, Revelstoke Map Resort, Community Futures, Chamber of Commerce, the Social Development Committee, the Economic Development Committee, and the OCP Focus Group. And now we're here presenting the framework to you today. The remaining steps are taking shape, many of which are happening at the same time. So we're working to secure funding and to identify some baseline research uh, to build and mobilize stakeholders to form the Revelstoke Tourism Alliance. Uh, we recognize there are a lot of moving pieces happening in the community right now. Um, and one of our goals was to identify where and how this framework fits in with current and future plans. And um, yeah, we want to ensure that the work of the Destination Management Plan isn't a static document or a one-and-done approach. Rather, it's a continual dialogue that informs planning and really gets put into motion. And then I was just going to end with kind of the definition of destination management. So the United Nations World Tourism Organization defines destination management as the coordinated management of all the elements that make up a tourism destination. Destination management calls for a coalition of many organizations and interests working towards a common goal, ultimately being the assurance of the sustainability of the tourism destination. So really, the destination is the community. And though DMOs like us have typically undertaken marketing and promotion activities, our responsibility is becoming much broader. Progressive destination organizations are visionary, innovative, and aspirational with the best interests of their communities at heart. And Tourism Rebelstoke is committed to moving in this direction. And I will bring it back to Ingrid to speak to how the destination management framework aligns with CED and other community initiatives.
Thank you, Megan. So as Megan mentioned, there's been a lot of thought and input from other organizations into this framework, and we're excited to share it with council today. It aligns with our economic development strategy, of course, which includes our resort development strategy. We're also looking at opportunities to do some backcountry recreation access planning. It'll help to inform that. We've already met with the OCP Focus Group, and this will provide some guidance and align with the OCP for within the municipal boundaries. And again, serve to guide our development outside municipal boundaries. And finally, it will help us prepare for the conversation with the accommodators about our MRDT renewal and increase a few percent. So I guess questions for council are how do we have a more constructive community conversation around tourism? And how can tourism be a positive force in the community? So I'd like to open it up to any questions council may have, recognizing that we've taken up a lot of your time. So there is opportunities to follow up in other forums on this. It'll be a several-month process. And so we'll be bringing it back to you with further stages.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Brown, Ms. DeWor. Appreciate what you're doing. It's interesting to see how much work goes into what you've been planning. We so much appreciate it. Any community, you can see that. Counsel, any questions, any comments? Everybody's just smiling. So should I?
Thanks very much for the presentation. It's exciting to see this progress. It feels like we've been talking about so many of these topics for so many years. And I remember from my time back on Chamber, the same kind of topics were being discussed, but it was always this one day, one day we'll get there. And here we are. So I'm looking forward to having this conversation. I do think it's interesting. We were talking before the meeting a little bit about how do you engage the community effectively? There are so many topics that we're trying to talk about all at once, but it does all dovetail. So it's not like we can talk about one in isolation of the other, because they are all happening together and they are all interrelated. And I think tourism ties into the flashy stuff that it's a little bit easier to get people excited about. So I hope that by leveraging some of the tools the city's been investing in and by collaborating in this way, we're going to be able to have a more robust discussion and hopefully get people to buy into it and participate because it's not helping anyone to talk at the community. We need to talk with the community.
Yeah, great words. Thank you for that. Awesome. Any other comments? Counsel Elliot?
I appreciate this. This is a great step forward. I think a comprehensive approach to what tourism does for our town and our future is needed and needs to be represented well. So I think this is a step in the right direction. Regarding how do we have a more constructive conversation around tourism? Is that I wonder whether tourism... The construction industry is not countered in the tourism world, and lifestyle is not countered in the tourism. We have a lifestyle that's appealing to a broad audience. People move here because of the lifestyle and the tourism, right? But then the construction side of the game is that we have a housing industry that's booming, right? Our construction guys are thriving. And the homes in our town are excessive, and they're going well. Basically, the construction side is growing immensely, but it's not countered in the impact of tourism and lifestyle on our town. So we give value to the railway. We give value to the hydro and mill. But tourism is on its own, but it doesn't count if construction. Our construction industry is booming, not because of the mill, not because of the railway, not because of the hydro. It's booming because the lifestyle and the tourism industry makes this place appealing. So only way the impact of tourism, we don't count construction in that world. And I think that's a miss.
Okay, so how do we...
I think it needs to be included in the conversation. We should be adding that to the impact of tourism.
Does that bring into the housing conversation?
Well, I should say, what is the impact of tourism on our town? If you're just saying the hoteliers and the restaurants are benefiting, you're not including the guys that are getting $50 an hour pound nails.
Yeah, it's the tourism that brought people here to the community to build, right? That's why they came. They started as a tourist, but they came here to stay. And so I think that's a prudent comment. They're here, they're part of that group.
Well, we have demand, and they're providing work. And they're not slowing down.
Any comment from other councils? Ms. Brown, any comment?
I can just speak to Counselor Elliot, your worship. Yes, I agree that the impact of tourism is extremely valuable on driving our economy forward, and we have not done a good enough job at capturing that impact. Part of our destination management approach will be to do that. And as we look at tourism, the sector as part of our economic development strategy, we have opportunities to do that impact analysis across sectors. And I think tourism is really important to kind of try and quantify that impact, and it does. Counsel Elliot's correct. It does go beyond the MRDT taxes. It goes beyond the happy visitors around town and the residents benefiting from offering their places as Airbnbs. It's actually really improving the quality of life in our community and presenting challenges as well. And so looking at that impact in a more fulsome way is going to be part of the strategy.
I would also add that if you're looking for strength of tourism and lifestyle, is that the amenities we have that are tourism-focused also attracts professionals, doctors and teachers. They're lining up to come into our town. And I see other communities are struggling to have medical people living in their community. We have an abundance. There's an opening in the medical field. It's filled in no time. So those strengths, we have two new schools as a direct result of our growth and positive reputation. So we have a lot of things that are coming to us from the fact that we are a growing tourism community.
Great. Appreciate that comment. All right. Thank you, Megan. Thank you, Megan. Appreciate appreciate your presentation and what you're doing for the community. Thank you again. All right. Take care. Okay, we're going to move on. Ms. Donato, parks, rec, and culture, two-tiered pricing system. So do you want to just talk a little bit about that with your presentation, please?
Regional districts. So most... All of the municipalities that I spoke with, their regional districts do not contribute to any of their operating expenses for parks, rec, and culture. So it's those residents of those regional districts that pay the visitor rate. So it's not meant to penalize tourists coming to the community and using those recreational amenities. In our situation, the regional district does have a cost-sharing agreement with the city, so they do contribute to a portion of the operating costs for parks and rec. So we are not in the same situation as those other municipalities. So implementing a two-tiered system similar to that would not be ideal for us if the intent was to charge tourists extra for coming into the community. That could be viewed as very... Not very welcoming, could cause a lot of confrontation at the front desk. And I'm just not really sure that that is the right way to go with that. If council did want to see other ways of generating additional revenue, we could look at the fees and charges bylaw. And perhaps there's certain fees that we could increase as well as we could also look at the hotel motel corporate pass program, which I've kind of provided a bit of history on how the fees were attached to the different hotels, campgrounds, et cetera. And I've kind of just highlighted from 2006 to what the fees are today, just so that you could see that you know, in the last 15 years, how the fees have increased slightly throughout the years. And in some years, you know, it's been... So between 2006 and 2009, there was three years where we didn't increase fees. So we don't consistently increase the fees for that program. But perhaps that's a conversation that we could have with the hoteliers and come to some type of agreement on what the fees should be for that type of pass program. Right now, we are not operating that program, and we haven't since COVID. One of the reasons is due to the limited capacity during public swims as well as where our operating hours are significantly reduced. So it would become challenging to try to offer offer the facility for use to residents as well as visitors when hotels are enrolled in this program. Because what we find in the wintertime is it's about 50% hotel motel, 50% residents.
Any comments? Any questions? Counsel Burksill?
Well, obviously, because the hotel, et cetera, program isn't running right now. But I'd just be curious to know how do we track like how often it's used by certain hotels or is it just across? You know, because like those fees, depending on the hotel, like some hotels are much bigger than others. So for some, it seems like it would be a decent deal. For some, it seems like a great deal. You know, so if there was some way to change it from a flat fee to based on how much it was used. But considering it's not even being run right now, I don't really see the point.
Counsel Shewa?
Well, I think I disagree with that. Just that because it's not being used right now, this is a great time to have the conversation so that when it's reintroduced, it's reintroduced in the after a robust conversation with hoteliers. Now is a great time to have that discussion so that maybe not right now, because the hoteliers are not necessarily in a calm state of mind with pandemic ongoing. But to have this vision to go forward, what does make more sense? To make it more equitable between organizations. Like, I agree. I think if we could scale it in some way.
Any comments, Ms. Donato?
Yes, your worship. Thank you. We do track the use that each hotel... The uses for each hotel. So I do have that information. I have all that statistical information on hand. And it is true that some hotels use it very often, so they definitely get their money's worth. And then there's other hotels, not so often, where, you know, a drop-in would work out to over $10 for a drop-in for one of their patrons.
Counsel Shewa?
So your worship, I'm wondering if this is a conversation to refer, especially in light of the presentation we just got from destination management and looking at regenerative tourism and how does tourism support our community? This seems like a prime example of a conversation to refer to that table or to encourage that next... What does the next step look like and take some time to have that conversation?
Yeah, I totally agree. You know, I want to make sure that the facility gets used. And the more it's used, the less it costs us to operate. And I might be wrong with that, Ms. Donato, but at that time, I'm thinking the more people we have going through, of course, costs less per hour, et cetera, et cetera. But we look at that sort of thing, and my whole feeling, I think the intention when... Correct me if I'm wrong, Counsel Ryan, but when you brought this up, it was like, what's the best way to move forward with funding the model? And so we're now hearing that, you know, with all due respect, charging extra for the tourism may be penalizing them. And so what's the best way? Is there a best way moving forward, or are we better staying with what we've got and supporting the groups that use it? So I'm asking maybe for some feedback to Ms. Donato, but I may not, you may not have all of those answers at this point.
Yes, thank you, your worship.
I am making myself clear, but I'm looking at it and saying, are we better off to stay with the model that we have now? Or is there an opportunity for us to talk to our hotels and see how that works with them? Next question. Any comment?
Yeah, I think it makes sense to engage with the people who are actually purchasing these to see if there's any willingness to change that structure for the businesses. But I am hearing that it makes no, it doesn't make sense to change the individual fee. And I can understand too, from an administrative standpoint, why that would be challenging to implement at the front desk. So I'd be more interested in exploring what it means for the commercial businesses.
Okay. So is that something that would be possible, Ms. Donato? Is exploring what the hoteliers and the businesses that use the pass system and seeing if there's an opportunity for a split increase? Or are we going to cause problems for those people?
Through your worship, I don't think we will cause problems for those people. I think they're definitely interested in keeping the program going. They would hate to see us abolish the program. So I think they would be more than willing to work with me to find a way that we could have some slight increases and keep the program going. But I think it's just important to really start the conversations now and keep them engaged and involved in that. And I can work through the Hotel Association to do that.
That'd be great. Counsel Burksill and then Counsel Elliot.
Ms. Donato, I don't expect all the numbers, but are there, you know, like some hotels where the cost is like per visit getting down to like $2 or $3? Is it like significant in that sense?
Through your worship, yes.
So there could be room for like two-tier pricing, like if you pay the... Whatever it is, I don't see it there. It's like $1,600. And then whatever that number is, once you hit 400 visits or something like that, then you pay another $1,000 or something like that.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's definitely something we can have conversations about and work with the finance department to see what would work best in implementing it administratively.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think council would be in agreement with you engaging in that way, Ms. Donato, and then leaving the front counter prices the way they are now. And that way, we're not going to have any issues at the front counter for our staff or for our visitors, whether they're local or not. Counsel Elliot, you have a comment?
Oh, I think, yeah, keeping it consistent is probably the most prudent choice. I think the most equitable choice that we should be making. But the number we're talking about is $21,000. It seems like a drop in the bucket. So what are we really talking about? Right? If we double the price, what? We increase it by a half, it brings it to 30,000. Again, what is the annual operating cost of the pool? It's very significantly more than that.
Yeah, we, as a community, we're subsidizing, and that was the intent. It was never going to be self-sufficient, right?
So if we're having that conversation, we just had a presentation from the tourism. They should have some, how can we build regeneratively and build this thing so it's more viable? And that should be the conversation we should be having. Let's get together, say, how can we make this work? Let's be productive. Let's dream. Let's build better. And that generally applies to running the rec department, running the tourism board, running everything. Let's go bigger and better.
And I think that's what Ms. Donato's saying to us. There's opportunity to work there. So from my personal perspective, I think we should leave it to her. She can discuss with whoever she needs to and discuss it with the people and come back with what she suggests is going to work, that she knows works. Is that okay, Ms. Donato?
Yes, your worship.
Okay, so we'll leave it with you, and you can let us know. Okay, so we'll leave it with you and you can let us know how that works at the next meeting. Thank you for your time and for. For all your work in getting that information to us. We really appreciate it. Thank you. All right. Thanks again. Let's move on. Bylaw compliance quarterly report. Any comments or questions on that? Cute puppy. Not seeing any parks and rec third quarter reports. Any comments or questions with that? Any questions from Ms. Donato while she's here? Any comments, Ms. Donato? Counselor Shawna has a question.
I'm just curious how staffing is going with the lifeguards and the hours in the pool?
So through your worship, we have recently hired two new casuals that are just going through their training sessions right now. So that will allow us to increase capacity. Once they're on the schedule, but in terms of additional guards, we're still recruiting. So we're still limited in our operating hours. It's, I recently sat in on a meeting with the Life Saving Society of BC. Where other colleagues were also on the call as well, and it seems to be quite. Consistent across the province that there is definitely a challenge with staffing these facilities right now. Yeah, I, I just can't say anything more about it. It's all across from Vancouver to Vernon to towns like Rebel Stoke. It's definitely been a struggle.
Fair enough.
Good. All right. Well, good luck in finding new people. Unless I can, I, I swim, but it's more like a rock, so I can help in the lifeguard department there. So. Anyway, thank you so much, Ms. Donato. Appreciate it. Any other comments from council? Seeing none, we're at the end of our meeting. So. I'm going to ask for termination of the meeting. Counsel Shawna, second by Counsel Brooksville, all in favor. Motions carried. Thank you. Thank you, staff. We can now stop live training. Appreciate it.